Ms. Robbins, we all set and ready to go?
I believe so. Just a quick note, if you took a sheet to make a public comment and didn't put it in the basket, just slide it down and I'll come grab it for you for the public comment.
All right. Well, thanks folks for joining us for this monthly meeting of Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board. The first thing in our agenda this morning is a public hearing, which is being held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board. It's called to order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 of District Regulations. Notice this hearing was, has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held via teleconference. Insurance on the making written and oral statements via video teleconference have been distributed. All statements must be presented today and should be concise. All statements will be complement of the hearing record. The only item on the agenda to review today is the proposed agreed board order with All Next USA Inc. Mr. Gavett, would you please give us the proposed board order?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The district brings the board's consideration and agreement with All Next USA Inc., which operates an industrial chemical manufacturing facility in Creighton Drive. District reports that All Next operated control equipment outside of required ranges and failed to get just the monitoring required by their Title V permit during 2024 and into early 2025. In May of 2025, district staff performed an onsite inspection of the facility and reviewed compliance reports the company had recently submitted. During the inspection, company staff discussed non-compliance reported in the recent reports and explained that understaffing had caused missing records on the weekend and that they had already stopped performing operations on the weekends to prevent this from reoccurring. They also discussed pressure drop readings that were out of range and stated they had reduced production and that prevented them from maintaining the ranges required in the permit. In June, the company applied to remove equipment and processes that were permanently shut down from their permit. This process will allow new ranges to be set at appropriate levels for the equipment still in operation. The company has agreed to pay a penalty of $16,500 to resolve this notice of violation. The district made the agreed board order available for the 30-day public commentary but did not receive any comments. The district recommends the board adopt the order as per votes.
Thank you. A housekeeping note, we're attempting to use these mics with a speaker there to improve audio. I don't know if it's working or not. That's the speaker right there. I'm assuming no. Okay.
You gotta get really close to it.
Yeah, I'm not going to speak directly into it, so I'll try to speak louder. Ms. Robbins, has a representative of All Next registered to make a statement this morning?
No.
No? Thank you. Has any member of the public registered to make an oral statement?
No, they have not.
Has any member of... Nope?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make the comment that the volume is 100% better. I'm not sure what, what changed, but we can hear you loud and clear online.
Okay, that's great. Okay, well, it's again, online, I think is through this device on the table here. And then in the room is going to be just our vocals until we figure out the mic situation. So please bear with us. And if you want to move to the front, there's a few seats available right here. And that might be helpful. Okay, I hope that helps.
It does.
Good. So we're at, members of the public registered to make an oral statement? No? Okay. Any members of the public submitted a written statement? Nope. Any members of the public in the editing room that wish to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this video teleconference? If so, please raise your hand via video teleconference you'll be called upon. This is a feature you can find in participants list or by pressing star three of joining by phone and you will be called upon. Ms. Robbins?
I don't see anyone.
Nope. Any questions from board members? Okay. This concludes the public hearing section of the agenda this morning. Now for order the regular meeting of Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board. We're conducting this monthly meeting via video teleconference. When I call board members' name that are present on a teleconference, please say here. Dr. Jeffrey Coburn?
Here.
Candace Shob White?
Here.
Marissa Neal?
Here.
Charlie Bertalan?
Here.
And William Porter?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum introductions this morning, Director Hamilton. I understand we have a few or a couple.
I do have a couple damn very pleased this morning. Wow, this is different, guys. Can you hear me better with this?
You can hear right there at that speaker? No? So just because you're talking louder. Yeah, these don't work so good.
It usually pops through over here, but it's not inconsistent.
All right.
There we go.
All right, so we're going to talk really loud and try to hopefully maintain that throughout. So I am very pleased this morning to introduce a new board member, Dr. William Porter, a radiation oncologist currently serving as the Medical Director of Department of Radiation Oncology, Baptist Health Harden in Elizabeth Town, as the newest member of the Air Pollution Control Board. After obtaining his Bachelor's of Science in Biology from Hampton University and a Master's Degree in Public Health from the University of Kentucky, Dr. Porter graduated from the Chicago Medical School at Roslyn Franklin University. He completed an internship in internal medicine at Jewish Hospital in Cincinnati, along with a residency in radiation oncology at the University of Cincinnati Medical Center. A native Louisvillean, it lacks a quintessential local question of which high school did you go to?
Say next.
All right, join. Since you came down there, I've been alone. So welcome to the board.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
And on behalf of the board, I want to welcome you to this, us group. We appreciate your willingness to serve and look forward to your contributions.
Thank you for having me aboard. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm also pleased to introduce Zaria Bullard, who recently joined the district as an Engineer One in the Indoctrination Program. Ms. Bullard graduated with her BS in Civil Engineering and a minor in Mathematics from Tennessee State University in May. With a background in environmental science, Ms. Bullard is a distinguished 2024-25 USDA NRCS scholar whose work at Tennessee State included collaborating with EPA to implement sustainable stormwater management practices integrated with campus learning spaces. And during the spring of 2024, she conducted and presented research titled "Analyzing Crash Frequencies at Railroad Highway Crossings in Tennessee" to the Transportation Research Board. This research led to her internship with Vaness Hangen Ruslin Inc. in Washington DC, where she was responsible for traffic safety analysis and analyzing data to identify design challenges. A proud Louisville native, Ms. Bullard is a graduate of Louisville Mail High School, and she's delighted to be back in her hometown. We're delighted to have her here. She plans to take the fundamentals of engineering exam and pursue a master's degree in agricultural engineering. Every time, she maintains a keen interest in writing farming and agriculture. It's surprising to me how many agricultural engineers are in the air pollution control world, including our own professional engineer Matt King, as well as the Director of the Kentucky Division for Air Quality. So might want to catch up with those folks when you get a chance.
You're welcome aboard and thanks for joining the group.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Public recognitions.
Thank you again Chairman Sullivan. I'd like to recognize Karen Regan, APCD Management Assistant, who received her Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from Columbia Southern University in late October, along with Certificates in HR Management and Project Management. So congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I have an additional recognition.
Okay.
This one's a bit hard. In February, I believe we introduced you to a beautiful 10-week-old copper-colored puppy named Star for our Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program. So at this point, I'd like to recognize Star and Andy Pardon, her trainer. Been in our office since then. Andy? Star will be moving on to her new family next week.
I don't think she cares. Well, that's awesome.
She has her, she has her, her work clothes on, so she's not supposed to be nice and tell them what's going on. Just a little bit about Star, as Rachel mentioned, she's been here for the last 10 months. She started when she was 10 weeks old. And she's been training to be a service dog for a veteran, PTSD, mobility, that sort of thing. They have got a person for her now, the Black Friday, she's actually going to go to her new, to her new person she's going to be working with. What she did here is really, really important. Being able to bring in the dog to a workplace and have them understand what needs to be done. Because when these dogs go into service and they go to an office, they have to know, I need you to be quiet, I need you to be calm, I basically need to disappear until my owner gets up and goes someplace, and I have to go there to help with that. So going around and meeting everybody here at Air Pollution Control, LMPD records. She's gone through the building several times. Every time when she comes in, just to greet people and learn how to greet those folks. Goes to meetings, learns to lay down and go to sleep under a desk. And that is the biggest quality that a service dog can have.
Looks like you did well.
These, these meetings, that's, that's her only, her only drawback is she's not too interested in air pollution. Usually when these things are good ones, she just kind of crashes out and kind of zones out on itself.
Will she be going local or?
It will be local. The gentleman works in an office out in J-Town.
Okay.
So, and she was actually picked because she has experience in an office. The other dogs in the program have not been going into an office, so.
That's great. Thank you. Moving on to the minutes, the regular, the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 15th, 2025, were distributed electronically for review. Are there any comments to amend by board members? Hearing none, those are approved. We'll move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Ms. Robbins, has anyone registered to make a statement this morning?
Yes, I have three.
Okay.
The first is Brother Kerry Goff.
All right, please step to the podium and give us your name again.
Morning, everyone. My name is Brother Kerry Goff. Reside in the historic Parkland neighborhood, and I've been residing there since 2002. I'm a father of five young adults and five grandchildren. When my youth was, I lived off of 38th and Broadway in Shawnee, New York. I enjoyed riding bikes, skateboarding, playing a variety of sports where no health issues are concerned. Since moving to Parkland in 2002, I've been pretty healthy and very active in my community, advocate for rights of justice. Recently realized after five years or so of residing in Parkland, I began having allergies, sinus issues to where my permanent doctor prescribed allergy medicines to assist with outside of everyday activities. Recently suffering from severe sinus infection, sometimes respiratory issues, and my eyes randomly burned due to being outside in normal fashion. Challenged with BPH, which is a large prostate, which is due mainly to taking the allergy medicines. Something I discovered in the area tonight due to the spirit of raccoons in my driveway and yard. When I needed to go outside, I would wear a headlight, begin noticing in which I thought was possible tiny bugs in the air, but realized it was some form of debris floating. I'm not sure what it actually is, but it resembles sawdust, due to my experience in Woodwork. Thank you all, and I appreciate you allowing me to share my testimony.
Thank you.
And next, we have Ebony Neil Cockburn from React.
Hello, my name is Ebony Neil Cockburn, and I'm with React. I'd like to speak today about Anderson Wood located in the Parkland neighborhood in West Louisville. Our goal is the significant reduction and ultimately the elimination of exposure to fugitive dust emissions, the thick black smoke that sometimes puffs out of the stack, and the potential personal harm or property damage that may occur if there's another fire or another explosion at the facility. Part of the way we are trying to reach this goal is by putting forth either solutions or projects that lead to identifying root causes. Last month, we put forth a solution, which was for the district to surveil that Anderson Wood stack and dust collectors by way of 24-hour video surveillance. This will provide vital information revealing patterns that could lead to root causes. Unfortunately, the district's response has been to suggest this responsibility, cost, and burden be placed onto the people who are being impacted. Residents are already paying the cost of being impacted. Our hope is that the board will push the district to make the surveillance happen. Last month, I told you that employees of Anderson Wood told district investigators that they had had to take shovels and wheelbarrows to the roof to clean up wood chips that had spilled there. Each time we bring up an issue, the district says it is someone else's job and not theirs. Sometimes that is questionable, but what we are asking today is for the district to investigate why the wood chips are landing on the roof. The wood chips and wood dust are emissions. Emissions are something that the district deals with. Yes, once the wood chips are on the roof, the fire department, maybe even codes and regulations, need to be involved in citing the company. However, it is definitely the district's job to find out why those fugitive emissions are finding their way outside of the conveyor system or wherever they're coming from. So here's this month's solution to the Anderson Wood problem. This board needs to push the district to find out why this debris ends up on the roof. The district must thoroughly investigate. This means they need to do more than just drive by the facility. They need to do more than scheduled trips to stand on the roof. They continue to say they work with companies. Well, they need to work with Anderson Wood by being onsite during each step of their processes to see where the breakdown in their systems might be. They need to also include some unannounced visits for good measure. So again, we're looking to this board to push the district to determine the root causes of fugitive emissions of wood chips and wood dust. The district, for some very odd reason, refuses to take the very simple low-cost steps to protect residents and passersby in the Parkland neighborhood. We hope the board can see the value in this, this solution in identifying root causes in helping to reduce potential harms to workers, residents, and those traveling in the neighborhood. This is an issue of health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robbins?
Hi, we have Dakota Lewis from React. Hello, thank you for listening to me speak today. My name is Dakota Lewis. I'm a member of the community concerned about the APCD's lack standards concerning issuing notices of violation. So APCD, their investigative report from the Anderson Wood April 2024 inspection shows that Anderson Wood exceeded the 20% limit for opacity. Yet no formal action has been taken to hold Anderson Wood accountable. When this concern was brought up at the District One Air Quality Meeting on October 30th, your representative, Rachel Hamilton, informed us that given how small of a percentage that the excess was, since it was 22%, that the APCD chose not to issue notices of violation, but rather work with the company itself. Well, the issue that this raises is with transparency and consistency. During that same District One Air Quality Meeting, even the Deputy Mayor Nicole George agreed that there was a call for consistency for APCD and their notices of violation. The call for consistency doesn't just come from nowhere. The community is concerned that the goalposts will just keep shifting. So last time Anderson Wood exceeded it, the opacity was at 22%. No notice of violation. What if next time it's 25? What if next time it's 30? So if you're not willing to issue a notice of violation because of such a small percentage, how can we trust that you will do it at all? Your spokesperson also informed us that you take into consideration past actions of companies when issuing violations. So have the companies showed a past trend of environmental concerns, air pollution? And countless community members here have shown you guys, brought issues with Anderson Wood to your attention. And if their past actions don't warrant current action from you, then the community can have no confidence that you guys can keep them safe. We need to see consistency with issuing notices of violation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Robbins? Okay. Are there any members of the public in the editing room that wish to make a comment? If so, please step to the podium. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a statement on this video teleconference? If so, please raise your hand via video teleconference and you'll be called upon. This is a feature you can find by pressing star three, by joining by phone, and you will be called upon.
I've seen our rows down.
Thank you. This completes the public comment portion of our meeting this morning. There is no unfinished business today. New business is moved into the recommendation from the district that the board adopt the proposed agreed board order with All Next USA Inc. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agreed board order?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board? I will now take a roll call, please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the agreed board order with All Next USA Inc. and no if you do not. Jeffrey Coburn?
Yes.
Candace Shob White?
Yes.
Marissa Neal?
Yes.
Charlie Bertalan?
Yes.
William Porter?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The proposed agreed board order with All Next USA Inc. is adopted. There are no committee reports this month, which brings us to the staff reports and Director Hamilton.
Okay. Between this and our computer setup over here, things are a little touchy, so we'll work on that. We have a number of presentations this morning, including one on our role with UPS Flight 2976 incident, so my presentation may be brief. We currently have three positions that we're in the process of hiring for, and I hope to be able to introduce you to those new staff members at the December board meeting. That's a communications coordinator and two environmental coordinator positions. And they are well within their processes, and we have our fingers crossed. As you know, the federal government returned last week from the longest government shutdown to date. During the 44-day shutdown, EPA burloughed most of its air program staff. However, EPA staff in the permitting and state implementation program section remained at work. We're glad to have all of our EPA partners back at work now. But it is possible that another shutdown could occur after the new year. However, we hope that can be avoided since we have work we need to do together. For Anderson Wood, I do want to let folks know, this is a bit lengthy. If the board has questions, please let Chair Sullivan know, and I'll try and answer them as I go through. APCD continues its surveillance of the company for fugitive emissions. Several of us also go by on our way to other sites, including those in Rubber Town, or at lunch, or on our way home. The sensor that we've installed at Mopin Elementary for particulate matter was installed in early August, and it can be viewed on EPA's Fire and Smoke Map in near real time at fire.airenow.gov. We review data from that sensor on a daily basis, and everyone here can too. That is a particulate matter sensor. It is focusing on the inhalable portions of PM2.5. On October 27th, seven APCD employees, including Assistant Director Flannery O'Neill and myself, visited Anderson Wood to share the concerns that we've heard from the community again. While there, we also toured the facility with staff from across our enterprise, permitting, compliance, and enforcement in anticipation of our drafting of a renewal operating permit. We'll be meeting this afternoon to discuss our findings and observations as part of the initial work on that renewal permit. On October 30th, Assistant Director O'Neill and I met with Councilwoman Tammy Hawkins, Deputy Mayor Nicole George of React, for our regularly scheduled quarterly meeting on Anderson Wood and other air issues. I'm very glad that Louisville Metro Emergency Services Director Jody Lyman was able to attend this meeting as well in person to hear and respond to React's concerns about emergency response, especially at Anderson Wood. This included a discussion of evacuation routes and a new LoReddy app. Fire Marshal Joe Williams and his Assistant Director joined us by phone to discuss their fire safety authorities, including their hazardous materials inspection program and their fire response activities related to Anderson Wood, including their most recent hazmat fire safety inspection, which they conduct annually. Part of their inspection includes evaluating Anderson Woodworth's ductwork for blockages that might lead to a fire. Their next annual inspection will be in early 2026. And my recollection from the meeting is that they'll join us in person for our next quarterly meeting to discuss the results of their inspection. On November 11th, staff from APCD met with AIL Justice, including Megan Poole and Chevonne Carthens, both former U of L professors, now at UT Austin and the University of Kentucky respectively, and React to discuss their community air monitoring project. With the correction of the AQI from the initial report, we meant to get further details on the dataset, including confirmation of the time. These sensors have an option to record time in universal time, which I think is five hours, different than standard time. And we're now using that information along with the general location information that React shared following our meeting. Review the data from Sprints, including Spikes, and how that may relate to nearby sources like factories or roadways. That information will help us continue to work with AIL Justice in React on evaluating the strategies recommended as part of their community project. Dakota, I'm sorry, your last name?
Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Lewis, Ms. Lewis mentioned an inspection that the district conducted in April of 2024. We conducted an inspection in April of 2025 at that time, including on the roof, and did not observe conditions there of concern. We were on the roof together on the 27th. That includes me, and yes, I was wearing these shoes, which is my own fault. But at that time, we were looking for fugitive emission issues. We did not observe any issues of concern then. I also want to note that Steve Gavett, who is our, the manager of our Compliance and Enforcement Group, and DJ Fountain, who is the supervisor of our program, were out there Friday.
What day was it? Last week?
Last week. Unannounced at the facility, and so we continue to do our work there. Any questions about Anderson Wood from the board?
So this afternoon's meeting, you report back to the board on your findings. You're meeting this afternoon to talk about your findings.
The meeting this afternoon.
Is that right?
Those of us who attended the meeting on the 27th.
Okay.
Across the enterprise, permitting, compliance, and enforcement, and walked through their facility and observed their operations to get together as we look at their permit for renewal, where we will adjust it and make revisions for us to share what we saw so that that can be incorporated into that permit.
Okay.
Do you, sorry.
Yes, sir.
I have a shot of you. I guess from a manuf, I'm taking this from a manufacturing perspective now. Probably have the right to do that by the background. Do we know what quality procedures the folks at Anderson Wood use? Do they use ISO, HACCP, nothing?
From a regulator's perspective, which is what the district's rules and regulations allow us to look at their facility, the answer is no, because that's not part of our regulatory program.
But it affects the regulatory program. Because if I've got operators that are looking at HACCP, hazards analysis, and control points, you focus on where issues are at. And if they're not focusing on where issues are at, that is where you get the process offsets. And then you get the end result that is the particulate matter.
At this point, the way we build our permits to drive compliance with those rules and regulations, if you believe that adopting a HACCP regulations, if you believe that adopting a HACCP standard or an ISO standard would drive compliance, then that's a recommendation you could make at this point, and the district could see whether or not that is something that could be incorporated into our rules and regulations. It's a recommendation we'll share with Anderson Wood, but it's not something that we can compel them to do.
Okay. My second one is, I hear comments a lot of meetings about particulates on the roof. Has anybody bothered to take a sample and just do a particle size distribution on it to see if it's all fine material, coarse material? Because that's going to give you an indication of where the root cause issues are at.
When we were on the roof, there was some very small pockets of what looked like it might be a pile here. I saw this.
Okay. And then this is a specific question for Anderson Wood, which I think needs to be related to now. This is an old plant, obviously, and I know when purchasing agents buy replacement parts, they like to go cheap. All you have to do to have a problem like this is to have an underpowered blower motor on a dust collection system. Can we ask them to at least say, is the blower motor on this system consistent with what was originally provided on, or at least that good? Because that, I think, will also help with the performance of the baghouse dust collection systems and pickup points.
From our standpoint, we are typically not allowed under the Clean Air Act to tell people what equipment they need to put in. When they decide what they're going to put in, we tell them what standard the air coming out has to meet.
Okay.
That's where we're working, and in our observations to date, given the multiple inspections we've had, including one in June that was unannounced, including our COs here on the briefing sessions, we have not observed a violation at this point. We'll continue working with the company and working with the community to be sure that we're seeing what they're seeing. I would like to ask everyone, if you observe a violation or something you think may be of concern, follow us when you see it. Please don't wait several weeks and tell us you saw something. That's not something we can act on. With respect to outreach, Metro Force SARM, our multi-jurisdictional organization that helps with our regional clean air work, held its fall conference in late October with state and local counterparts in the eight southeast states and EPA Region 4. Their permitting and state implementation plans staff were able to attend. I spoke on the last day about our recent successful exceptional demonstration showing Canadian wildfire ozone impacts in 2023 and some recommendations that we believe EPA should adopt, since Canada continues to experience significant wildfires, which have impacted ozone again in 2024 and 2025. I attended and spoke at the Association of Waste, Air and Waste Management's Fall Northern Kentucky Conference, saw the panel with Bob Hodenbosie from IFRPA, Matt Stecky from the Indian Department of Environmental Management, and Michael Kennedy from the Kentucky Division for Air Quality. It was a pleasure to share our work with that group and also to be on panel with those peers. Bob Hodenbosie began his career with Ohio EPA in 1973. We worked together in a group called the Association of Air Pollution Control Agencies, and whenever Bob is on a call and you hear him ask a question, I know I listen harder because he is a font of knowledge about implementing the Clean Air Act. And last night, we shared information about our role in emergency response and heard presentations from MSD and the LUPC on their work. We are beginning the funding work for fiscal year '27. I know fiscal year '26 just started for Metro on July 1st, but at this point, we've completed our initial sustainability, language access and equity plans, which are required by local metro council, and we'll be working with those offices to finalize those plans early next year. Our next step will be to develop our high-level goals and submit those early next month. We are at the presentation point. Are there any questions from the board before I move on?
Not for me. Anybody else?
As promised, we've been talking about our risk management plan program. Director, Assistant Director O'Neil has a report this morning. Flannery?
Good morning. We'll give you a moment to get the slides up and running. Can you hear me okay with the mic or do I need to be close? Great. So earlier this year, the board asked for APCD staff to review the fee structure for the risk management program to determine if a fee increase was needed. So today, I will present an update on that review, but want to just walk through a few slides, refreshing everyone on what the risk management program is before we talk specifically about how we administer the program and the fees. So the risk management program is a chemical accident prevention program at facilities that use certain hazardous substances with the goal of preventing accidents that could impact the public beyond the fence line of the facility. This rule, the risk management plan rule, requires facilities to develop risk management plans that identify potential effects of a chemical accident, identify steps that the facility is taking to prevent those, an accident, and spell out emergency response procedures should an accident occur. Next slide. And we have, the regulatory authority for this program comes from the Clean Air Act Section 112R, 40 CFR Part 68, and then APCD Regulation 5.15. APCD is one of nine states that retains this program and one of the very few at a local level. In fact, Kentucky Department of Air Quality returned our program to the EPA several years ago, but we have elected to retain this program because the EPA focused only on inspect about 3% of all facilities across the country, and we feel like more frequent inspections in relationship with these facilities is warranted. Next slide. So quick view of where these facilities are located in our counties. So we have 19 facilities. This map is available on our website, and these slides will also go, be posted on the website online, so you can take a look and click on each of those dots and understand the type of facility, what they're manufacturing, the name of the company, address and all of that information. Next slide. There are three program levels, program, and well, I guess before we get into the program levels, EPA maintains a listing of hazardous substances and the amounts which trigger participation in the program, and there are currently 258 substances on that list. So it's a comprehensive list, and then based on the, those substances, there are three program levels depending on certain criteria. Specifically for us here in Louisville, all of the 19 companies that we have enrolled in the risk management plan program are in program level three. That is the highest level, and that they are either subject to OSHA process, safety management, or they have certain process classifications, which are typically complex chemical processes that make them, or categorize them in program level three. Next slide. Presently, our fees are updated annually according to the Consumer Price Index, along with other permit fees, and are adjusted in June prior to the beginning of our new fiscal year. So currently, we are in fiscal year '26, and like I mentioned before, we have 19 participating companies in, in, all in program three. And we currently have $51,086 in carried forward funds from previous years, and that's mostly unspent funds from training and salary. Next slide. So program administration. Historically, this program was jointly administered with Global Metro Emergency Services through a memorandum of understanding, but due to the recent retirement of the staff that had operated, cooperated this program with us, we're pursuing joint administration with Metro Public Health and Wellness, who also operates a hazardous materials response team. So this move is going to necessitate increased budget and a thorough training program to support the new staffing of the program. We have been reliant, both at APCD and Emergency Services, on staff that have been with Metro for many, many years, and it's the need for this ongoing training and to consider succession planning as staff consider, you know, next steps in their career. Next slide. So next steps are that we are going to finalize an agreement with Metro Public Health and Wellness to jointly administer the program. We'll be getting on warning and training with those new, new to our program staff members, and then staff at APCD will be preparing budgets and a fee increase package to bring that to the board for review, and that will take place in early spring for implementation in fiscal year '27, which would begin on July 1st of 2026. Next slide. That's it. Questions?
So what is, what's the timing of, I appreciate you come to an understanding with Metro about when it occurs. What's the anticipated timing of that and the need for the training and the monies?
Our anticipation would be as soon as we draft up the agreement and get our John Hancock on it. This really supports some budget work for Public Health and Wellness, so it's a benefit for them. They're very excited about this collaboration. In the meantime, Industrial Compliance Supervisor has taken on the role here at the district for implementation issues beyond the administration that we already do. So not a lag, but we'll bring people in and we get to get them trained, probably starting first in the year.
And so you'll start using those, those residual funds at that time?
Yes. And there's a series of coursework that the new staff will undertake, some of which is in person, some of which is online, so depending on schedules.
Other questions from board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to go ahead and update the board on UPS Flight 2976. Andy, if you'll pull up that presentation. For the last several years, we've given the board an update on APCD's role in emergency response, and we had planned as part of the regular board meeting this month to invite the local emergency planning committee to give an update on its work. The incident with UPS Flight 2976 seems like a good idea to go ahead and just put out the information we've previously given about our role in emergency response and the amazing first responders we have here in Louisville, and then quickly get to Flight 2976 air impacts. Next slide. Included in this presentation is the local laws and ordinances that govern emergency response and the plan. These lay out their roles for every part of government, including local partners, when there is an emergency response. This is the Global Metro Emerg-- I'm sorry, Global Metro Hazardous Materials Ordinance, and MSD is the implementing administering agency of that. Next slide, please, Andy. This is the Global Metro Emergency Management Emergency Operational Plan. This is the most up-to-date version. It is available through that link on Global Metro Emergency Services webpage. It is a document that helps first responders know what the plan is when an incident occurs. It's very inside baseball. We've made recommendations in the past that it needs a plain English guide so that folks understand where are the directions for informing first responders about evacuations.
Is that what this is, plain English?
No.
Okay.
This is very inside baseball. This one's a challenge for me, and I've been around certified hazardous materials manager in a previous life, and I've been around a long time, and this one is jargon and acronym heavy as well. So, next slide, please. This is the Global Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a five-year plan, too, was recently updated in 2022, and it evaluates all of the types of things that could happen. It's kind of a forward-looking plan of projecting what could happen in the event of a natural disaster, for example, or some sort of a hazardous materials release. This document in total is on the Global Metro Emergency Services webpage, and it's about 700 pages. Next slide, please. In Louisville, this is how an incident is responded to. When there is a hazardous materials incident that occurs, a call is made to 911 or the National Response Center. The incident commander, the person who is in charge of all hazardous materials releases here in Jefferson County, is the fire department. They are the ones who here will be on site. They're going to evaluate for hazards to first responders, hazards to people who may be nearby, hazards to the public at large, and have the incident and maybe first responders who have hazardous materials training. Public Health and Wellness, Metropolitan Sewer District, the emergency management agency. They're also assisted here locally by the Kentucky Emergency Response Branch, as well as US EPA's emergency response team. There we go. You can go through this presentation. There's a link to each of these first responders who are specially trained in hazardous material, Global Fire Department. Next slide, Andy. Metropolitan Sewer District. Next slide. Just keep going. Global Metro Emergency Services, they have also launched a new app called Lou Ready. If you haven't taken a look at that app or downloaded it, I encourage you to do so. Public Health and Wellness. These are some of the tools that they have at their disposal within the incident zone in order to monitor environmental conditions. That includes air monitoring. They do specialized monitoring within the incident zone. Next slide, Andy. They're also assisted with the Kentucky Emergency Response Branch. They have even more specialized equipment, including a field deployable autogas chromatograph like we operate at our Cannon Slane and Algoquin Parkway air monitoring stations. Next slide, Andy. And then, of course, there is the US EPA's emergency response team. They have a suite of very sophisticated tools that can be brought into an incident. In this incident, they responded in 24 hours. They were here on November 5th. They actually came under the, their authority for being here is under CIRCLA, the Comprehensive Environmental Response, it's the C, community? No, I'm forgetting. This is federal law that governs hazardous materials releases. They have a website up. It's linked there, and you can find out information about their responses through that link. It is detailed about their work, includes some of the work by the Kentucky Emergency Response Branch. They are no longer here, is my understanding from Wes Sednor at presentation last Sunday. Next slide. Next slide. APCD. So the Global Metro Air Pollution Control District, unlike all of those other folks that I just shared, we do not have trained hazmat-- that I just shared, we do not have trained hazmat professionals on our staff. That's why we are going to work with Public Health and Wellness, and why we've worked with EMA in the past, and that is to have that first responder who is working within the incident zone. We may be called to assist. We have specialized knowledge because of the sources that we regulate here. We also have specialized air monitoring knowledge. In the plan that I mentioned, we're often mentioned in the section that talks about evacuation because we have that specialized air monitoring equipment and also weather information, which we'll talk about here in a moment. Are there any questions about APCD's role here? Then I'd like to ask Dee Lynch, who is our Community Outreach Coordinator, and Brian Paris, who is our, oh, data analyst and air toxic supervisor, to take over.
Thank you. Come on, this, over to the next slide. Andy, probably the next one. This is a slide deck that was presented to the Public Outreach Committee of the, of NACA, the National Association of Clean Air Agencies. So if you were following the incident that happened on Tuesday the 4th, know that some of this may look familiar to you if you were following the news and you have more background being a Louisvillean, but we are presenting this to a national audience about our communication response to what happened. So, moving to the next slide. So you may know some things about UPS Worldport. Thank you. We all found out more about UPS Worldport than we ever had when this incident happened, you know, about how big UPS Worldport is, how many floods that take off, 300 each day. And, you know, we see those planes here in this neighborhood going over our office quite often. Next slide, please. Okay. And we wanted to familiarize our audience with the crash. When it happened, I think 5:15 in the afternoon, how much fuel was being carried by that plane because it was on its way to Honolulu, Hawaii. And we know that several businesses were impacted. We know that 14 people lost their lives. And when we made this presentation, all this was pretty raw, pretty fresh. And obviously, the investigation is still ongoing. Next slide, please. So Tuesday evening, when this happened, most of us were, you know, a few people were still in the office and seeing the smoke plume out our windows. Some of us were on our way home. When the shelter-in-place order was extended to cover most of downtown Louisville, we also had that shelter-in-place was updated during the evening. And then, obviously, schools were closed and floods were canceled. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn this over to Brian on the air quality data from that evening.
So air quality was, of course, the concern throughout the Louisville community that evening. While the emergency response team was assessing air quality conditions, there were also a few tools that were, tools and data sources that were regularly available that could be used to kind of assess the widespread air quality conditions. Data that we collect routinely is, of course, a valuable data set in a case like this. I'll get to that in a moment. Another tool that's available was the NOAA Weather Radars. Of course, traditionally, that's used to measure precipitation, rainfall, snow. But in this case, the, the smoke plume was so thick that it was picked up on radar too. Local media, local meteorologists use the radar images to track the smoke plume. So these are a few images of kind of the progression of that smoke plume during the first, first hour. So you can see that, you know, with a southerly wind that was in place, the, the smoke plume was generally transported to the north, to northeast. You notice on, on the maps, if you can see, there's a couple red crosses. Those are two locations of, two of the five ambient air monitoring sites that, that we operate. And so you can see that the smoke plume was, was certainly at least overhead of those two air monitoring sites.
Does the orange represent the smoke plume?
So, I mean, the green, the, the green area represents the smoke plume, and then those like yellow and orange areas would be the most dense-
Concentrated.
Areas of, of the smoke.
Okay.
Now, the one thing that the radar can't do is measure what is actually occurring at the ground. These are measurements that are slightly elevated. So this is where our data from our instrumentation becomes quite useful. If you have the next slide, Andy. So while radar was showing, you know, significant impacts, at least a loft higher up in the air, our data, apologies, maybe a little hard to see, but our, our particular data showed that air quality was actually very good surface throughout the whole Louisville area. So this obviously became a bit of a challenge for, for the local media to, to explain what's going on. But essentially, what you have in this case is the smoke was rising and giving, giving enough loft to prevent any significant impacts at the ground. So air quality remained quite good throughout most of the evening. At the Jeffersonville Monitor across the river, it did into the moderate range later in the evening, but overall, air quality impacts at the ground were, were quite minimal. Next slide, Andy. This is a graphical representation of some data from an instrument called a solometer that we operate at our Cannon Slade site near Bowman Field Airport. And essentially, what this instrument does is shoots up some pulses of laser, and it measures the reflection or the scattering of that laser from particles, clouds, anything that might be in the air. And, long story short, is the, the red circle in the mirror, in the middle, is basically a response to the smoke plume as it went over the Bowman Field area. And this tells us precisely, in this case, at what elevation that smoke plume was. So it confirms, again, that the smoke, there was no significant impacts at the ground, but that the smoke plume was at about 1,000 meters height or 3,000 feet. Next. And, and this is just another, you know, obviously, several images of the smoke plume that just reinforces the, you know, the smoke, majority of that smoke stayed higher in the atmosphere, not, not, not in ground, at least from a, you know, widespread air quality consideration.
So Wednesday morning, Brian provided us the information that you just saw on those slides. And I think, like anybody, I'm, I'm a communicator and thinking about the public and I'm thinking, well, what do we say? You know, because the last thing that I had sent out in social media was on Monday, sent out our forecast, as usual, that we were expecting good air quality all week. And, you know, we needed to think about, well, what do we say at this point? And so I went and found Assistant Director O'Neal, and we got together with Director Hamilton and talked about what talking points we might have, because now you've got people asking lots of questions, people calling the district about the air quality. And, you know, I always think about it like a mom. You know, even if your kids are grown, you're still a mom, and I'm thinking, well, you know, those kids are home from school, you know, because JCP has called off. And I'm thinking, well, you know, do you let your kids go out and play this afternoon after, you know, that smoke plume that I saw yesterday? So, next slide. So we talked about what we needed to say, and I wrote some things up and sent them back to Assistant Director O'Neal. She edited them, and then we, this is essentially what we put out on social media, this on Twitter. We started out by thanking our local emergency responders, which clarified our role, you know, because we are not there monitoring at the actual crash site and explaining what they did with their air monitoring. We also explained our role, which is ambient air monitoring and what we saw and what we were seeing, and clarifying that morning, we did still have moderate air quality due to PM, but it was also heading for good air quality for the, for the day. So we let people know about that, as well as there was some light smoke from wildfires. Andy, next slide, please. Okay. And then letting everyone know that we have resources. If you want to see what's going on with the air quality, you can always go to Louisville Air Watch, and that's a screenshot from that morning. We were just in the moderate range that morning when we sent out this tweet. And also, you know, having connections, you know, if you want to know more about the incident's response, you know, we had them in this tweet. And also clarifying that, yes, air quality forecasts be good for the rest of that week. Next slide, please. Okay, that tweet was picked up by Louisville Mayor Greenberg's office. So I think that, including that as an update, actually made sure that it was seen by a lot more people than we usually see, over 9,000 views at the time. We took, I took that screenshot last week. So, and just for comparison, we usually see anywhere from 50 to 200 views on anything that we post on that particular social media. We also included it on All the Care social media, including Facebook, Instagram, Threads, and the Facebook for APCD. Next slide, please.
While we're waiting, I do want to mention that the weather was extremely beneficial during this event. Had the event occurred the next day, we had much more variability in winds, and the situation could have been significantly worse.
So that message that was crafted and was also sent out by Director O'Neal was picked up by local media, spelled up, picked up by local public media. And next slide, please. We have, for your journal, quoted those talking points. Next slide, please. A couple of the key takeaways. Obviously, this incident was still fresh, but something we, we did very well was responding on a timely matter, making sure that we clarified our role. All of our staff received an email from Director Hamilton, quickly letting us know that if any media inquiries came in, you know, how to direct them and where to direct them. So I think that was very helpful. And also, just, you know, being prepared for things is always key, even if, you know, the unthinkable happens, you know, you need to have some kind of plan on how do you respond? We have a lot of good contacts with the media. We have, you know, established good social media followings, and so, you know, we have a way to communicate these things when they unfortunately do.
Any questions for Dee? For Brian?
Not for me.
Thank you all very much. Part of that fabric of being prepared is also the Local Emergency Planning Committee. They've been doing some work to engage with the community, and this morning, Corinne Greenberg is going to share an update. And then we have an update from MSD, and so.
This is going to be a little odd because some of the slides have animations, so Andy and I are going to have to record to get past those.
While, while he's bringing it up, I'm here representing the Local Emergency Planning Committee of Jefferson County. LEPC was established after the Emergency Planning Community Right to Know Act of 1986. That was a federal law passed after the Bo Hall incident in India, so that every county would have a functioning organization to basically allow collaboration of the emergency responders in that community. As an LEPC, we meet three times a year, the third Thursday of March, June, and October. The membership of the LEPC includes all the emergency responders that Ms. Hamilton mentioned in her program. So MSD is heavily represented, APCD has representatives, Local Metro Public Health and Wellness has representatives, all the fire companies operating in Jefferson County, so of course, Louisville Fire, J-County, Burn Creek, Oklahoma, PRP, all of those companies are represented on the LEPC. I work for a manufacturing company. We have hazardous chemicals on site. We are all also members of the LEPC by, by virtue of reporting chemical data to LEPC. And then the media is also supposed to be part of the LEPC. We don't have any active media members right now, but we're really trying to, to engage them as well. So.
The public too, right, Corinne? Sorry? The public too?
Yes, the public is more than welcome to attend as well. Historically, the LEPC at our three meetings of the year, we would exchange ideas, collaborate. Networking is a big part of it, you know, as a facility rep, it's always better to meet your, your fire chief in a professional setting rather than when the plant is on fire. So it allows that kind of networking. We will always have a professional or technical program, so for professional development, if there's a new technology or somebody has a good case study that would make a good review, we would show them as our technical program. I'm also going to call out, Mike Reagan is here with me. He's the vice chair of the LEPC for this year. He works for MSD, so. So a few years ago, you know, as we meet every three, few months, you know, the East Palestine Train in the Realm that occurred.
Go ahead.
And along with this incident, there was all sorts of, it was in all the news, broadcast media, print media, online social media, and the messaging was just really inconsistent and confusing. It didn't help. Go ahead and hit it a couple more times. And it was just all these different headlines coming out here in Louisville. Go ahead. Hundreds of miles downstream, one more. Bottled water is flying off the shelves. You could not buy bottled water at Kroger or Walmart the week after this incident in Louisville, Kentucky because of public concerns and fear of whether or not the drinking water hundreds of miles downstream would be affected by this. So when this happened, we, we said, maybe we need to get better on our, on our communications. Next slide. Closer to home, we have the Rubber Town community. That's 10 manufacturing facilities. The oldest one is my facility, 96 years old, they expect to 1929. Eight more facilities were built as part of the war effort in 1941, and a 10th facility was built in 1979. Of course, we're on West Louisville, which is a heavily developed residential neighborhood, high density population, a lot of environmental justice issues, you know, people interested in what's going on in these facilities. Go ahead, and just slightly put all the pop-ups here. So there's just a lot of interest and questions and concerns about what's going on with all these chemicals that surround us in our, in our community, whether it's an incident like the Train in the Realm or, or a complex like Rubber Town. Keep going. Do more. Okay. That should take care of the animations for now. Sorry about this. Next slide. So, after all, after the East Palestine ground, we had our June meeting, June 2023 of the LEPC, and we said, you know, what can we do to, to advance the conversation here to, to get everybody on the same page so that we don't have all these unanswered questions? And for folks like me, in my workplace, I'm the EHS Management, Environmental Health and Safety, you know, part of my job is training our onsite emergency responders, our asthma technicians onsite. I also train all our new hires. So if I get a 22-year-old young person, you know, showing up for their first full-time job, and they've never worked in a chemical facility before, now they're going to start working in a chemical facility, I get that young person trained up to understand all the basics of chemical hazards and chemical safety broadly and generally, and then specifically about hazards of the chemicals at our site. And we said, when we're doing all this training all the time with our own work populations, we can turn it around and share it with the public and just basically try to bring everybody who wants to know up to speed, you know, get this information out there. And so at our June 2023 LEPC meeting, the committee, the whole- And so at our June 2023 LEPC meeting, the committee and the whole authorized us to proceed with development. Next slide. Okay, so what we came out with was this three-part course, and I did present this to this board in May of this year. So basically, it's about two and a half hours of content. The first hour on the first meeting date would be the basics of chemical hazard communication. So we literally just talk about the basics of different kinds of chemical hazards and how we, how we talk about those. The second session is, builds on that first session. Okay, now we've established these terms and these concepts and these behaviors. Let's talk about air emissions. So we spent like the first third of that meeting talking about routine air emissions, the daily work of the Air Pollution Control District. What are they looking for? What are we permitted to emit? How does that affect, you know, public health and wellness? The next part of that session is talking about, okay, well, what about when you have accidental emissions? Like the East Palestine derailment, like the car ride incident, like the plane crash, okay? So we talk about different kinds of things that could be emitted in much greater quantities unexpectedly and suddenly without, without permit because of these accidents. And then we talk about how do we respond to that? What is appropriate? Where can you get more information very quickly to learn about different kinds of chemicals in an evolving situation? The third session, we come back around, we really have to talk about applied risk management. So it's not that we're just out there winking it and trying to work our way through things. You know, facilities have plans, the agencies have plans. We have all these things in place so that when we need it, we can draw on those resources and put together an appropriate coherent response very quickly. Next slide. We did create some visuals specifically for the course. I threw this up there, this is just a lot of fun to be able to try to bring these concepts to the screen. Next slide. We always concluded each session with a recap of what we discussed and before we start the next session. So for our, our first session, we talked about, in order to be affected by a toxin, you have to have a source, a pathway, an exposure, and a toxic dose. We talked a lot about dose. That means you have to have a certain concentration in order to be affected. You know, just because a chemical is present does not mean it is harmful in the amount present. You know, the community has the right to know about hazards of chemical substances in our community. That's all covered in the first slide. Next, next slide. At the end of session one, we start talking about ways to recognize and identify different hazardous chemicals based on the markings. So we talked about some OSHA pictograms. We talked about DOT placeting and labeling. We talked about National Fire Protector Association, those blue, red, yellow, white placards that you would see. Talking about how to interpret what those symbols and placards are trying to tell us. And then we introduced some, some key resource materials, some reference guides, like the NASH Guide to Chemical Hazards, the Department of Transportation Emergency Response Guide. We talked about how to use these reference materials. Next slide. In the second session, like I said, we start off by saying different chemicals are regulated differently because they pose different hazards and they'll be present in different places. And then we take that concept one further with air pollutants. Different air pollutants are regulated differently because they have different hazards. And so we talk about that. But we do talk about different kinds of chemical incidents, hazmat incidents that may occur. We talk about how to respond. We talk about shelter in place as an appropriate tool for certain kinds of chemical releases and, and how, how that can be communicated in our community. Next slide. And then in the final slide, the final session, we come back around, we bring it all together. And I want to share this slide here, you know, safety is actually the presence of control, not the absence of risk. Okay, so everything in this room is made out of chemicals. This podium is made out of chemicals, the microphone, my shirt has, you know, fibers in it. The air we're breathing is made out of chemicals. Your body is made out of chemicals. And then there are hazardous chemicals. You know, if you want to make this carpeting, I'm absolutely certain that the company that makes this carpeting has hazardous chemicals in their factory. And so if we want to have things made out of, you know, plastic chairs and fiber carpeting, we have to be able to manage those hazards. And it's the presence of control that makes it safe. Next slide. At the end of every session, we open it up for Q and A. This has been really fun and engaging. The, the third in-person session, the last one we did here in this room, the, the content of session three is only 20 to 30 minutes, 30 if we stretch it. After that, you know, we're only supposed to stick around for another half hour taking questions. We were here for an hour plus on that third session, and it was great. It was wonderful because the participants were engaged and had really good questions, and they wanted to tease it out and talk about it. So we enjoyed that a lot. Next slide. And we do have lots of reference material. We have four pages of acronyms. So every acronym that you, you might imagine that we mentioned in the course, they're all in there. We have seven pages of vocabulary. We hand these out as paper flyers, and then we email it to participants after the fact. And I meant to bring my Emergency Response Guide book, go ahead and hit it one more time. But that's a, a paper book about this being issued by the Department of Transportation. And we were able to provide hardbound paper copies or spiral bound paper copies in hard copy to every participant who completed all three sessions of the class. And that was a, a nice fun takeaway that people actually got to have this to use and go forward. Excellent. Okay, so we did have some key partnerships that helped this kind of fruition. The Air Pollution Control Department was very gracious in inviting us to use this space. They helped a lot with publicity and getting email notices out. We did have a very helpful segment. Our Local Emergency Planning Committee treasurer, our new treasurer, had a media connection with WDRB, and they ran an on-air segment in early June, which helped us get some registration for the July and August sessions. So that was a good boost. The West Jefferson County Community Task Force, it's been very helpful. Like we spoke at one of their meetings, and they were pushing out the, the training invites. And also the Rubber Town Community Advisory Council. RCAC is a standing committee meeting of community members and facility reps. We'll get together every month on the second Thursday for a dinner meeting. And RCAC invited us to give our LEPC program as the May, June, and July technical content of this year. So, next slide. There's some just information about the WDRB story. Next slide. And this is one of the emails that APCD sent out, including a photo of one of our presenters here in this very room. Next slide. Okay, so as we were putting this together, we, we beta tested the course before we went public with it. When we were in beta testing, November of '24, the Givaudan incident happened in the Clifton neighborhood. So we incorporated that in the slide, okay, let's talk about this kind of incident. There is a title on here, not February '24, but in February '25, February of this year, the Courier ran a front-page story about residents' concerns about Rubber Town. We said, okay, CJ's gonna put these questions in the newspaper, let's put the answers in our slide there. So we brought that in. And then before we go forward with our 2026 presentations, we will add something about the plane crash. Not only the 38,000 gallons of jet fuel that went down with the plane, but also the Kentucky Petroleum Recycling Facility that landed on top of. And you have two different chemicals with two different hazards. Let's talk about this. Next slide. Okay, we did have four offerings, four public offerings in 2025. So like I mentioned, the first three, May, June, July, we spoke at the Rubber Town Community Advisory Council's regular monthly meetings. Then in July of this year, we met in this very room. It was on a Friday mornings at 11:00 AM, three Fridays in a row. This was open to the public, we took registrations, we met here. We did it again in August, that was on three Monday evenings. So we're moving the days around, we're moving the times around to try and accommodate as many people who might want to come for one of these sessions. And then in September, we did Monday, Wednesday, Friday at noon, online. So it was like in one week, you got all three parts for sitting there at your desk and going to lunch and learn online. So we had, you know, the numbers aren't huge, but they're a start, okay? We're, our biggest challenge at this point is getting the word out and getting people the how, how to register. Next slide. Okay, so having said that, this is where we are, looking forward to 2026. Those of us who develop the course content and are presenting the course, we do all have other day jobs. And we did four full sessions over the span of four months. And it was really quite a lot, to be honest. We decided going forward, let's, you know, try to do a quarterly. We can gather more registrants and get them into each session if we do it this way. We're gonna do two in-person and two online. So we already checked with APCD. We're gonna have this room on three Mondays in January. It's the 5th, the 12th, and the 26th. That skips over Mark and the Canadian Day. So we'll do the first two parts, the first and second Monday of the month, skip a week. And then we'll come back for part three at the end of January in this room, 5:30 to 6:30. In the second quarter, we're gonna do three Fridays in April, online at 12:00 noon. We haven't yet set our dates for the third quarter, the fourth quarter. But here's the thing, that QR code up there is our perpetual code. You don't have to sign up for a specific session with different links. That code right there will get you to any of the 2026 sessions. It's live online right now with the first quarter and the second quarter dates. And then there's a third button if you say, well, I can't make either of those. But keep me on your list for when you do post the third and fourth quarter dates. You can put yourself on that list through this link. I've also included it as a paper flyer that is out here on the sign-in table. Same QR code, same link, take the flyer, it describes the course. If it's not for you, share it with a friend who you know has these kind of questions. Put it on a bulletin board at church or something like that. Email me or, you know, register through the link. And there's a part where you put questions, comments, reach out to us. We wanted to share the word. Next slide. This is the four of us who are the, the presenters, so Mike and I. And then we have a, a third individual from Louisville Metro EMA, and then a fourth individual who's also a facility rep. So between the four of us, we bring different voices to the three sessions, so we, we trade off of each other. Next slide. There's our contact information. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. We'd love to see more people at our sessions as we go into 2026 and get these questions answered and get the conversation started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you, everyone, for their patience. I know it's been a long meeting. We do have an update for the board on MSD's work implementing the Second Amendment Degree Board Order addressing odors that the board entered into two years ago.
2024, September, we have three orders.
Okay. All right. Are you all ready?
Yeah.
Representing the SD.
I've got a very brief presentation for you today. You each should have received the actual annual report that was sent out in September. Hopefully had an opportunity to read it. So today what I'm gonna do is just walk through high-level, you know, what we've done thus far. I'll also give you a summary of the updates that were in that report and open it up for any questions. And I do need my glasses, so I apologize for looking.
No problem.
Chairs are tight. So first and foremost, if we don't have it, that's fine, I can still talk to you. Well, part of the Second Agreed Board Order is that we would do this, we would provide reports. We would develop action plans, which we did a short-term action plan initially that represented two years. Activities we would do in fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26. And then we'd do a medium-term action plan for the next two years and a longer term action plan. So the thing we're talking about today is both the projects we're talking about, and you've just held that for a minute, tied to the things that we had outlined in the short-term action plan. And that action plan, you should have received a copy, but if you don't have it, and for anyone else who's interested, it's all on our website. You go to LouisvilleMSD/older, LouisvilleMSD.com/older. On our website, you can find all this information. You can find the action plan, you can find the mid-year report that we had to do as well that was submitted in March, and the annual report that we submitted in September. And that report, of course, is for our fiscal year, which was July 2024 through June 30th of 2025. And it completes our very first year of reporting on the Second Amendment Degree Order. All right, if you can change the page, that'd be great. So I do want to give a little highlights and updates on what we've done from a community perspective. One of the first things we did back in 2024 was really increase the amount of community engagement that we had. One being direct community meetings. In our first year, and this is our fiscal year, we had five clarity meetings. We also went to neighborhood meetings. We also had some church meetings as well. We consistently invite members of the community, if you've got a group or a community, a neighborhood association that you'd like us to come speak at, we're happy to do that. We attended several district council meetings as well. So we're open to come and talk to the groups, to talk to them about what we're doing from an odor mitigation perspective and ask any questions that they might have in relation to, you know, their area and odors that they might be experiencing. We also throughout the year continue to do monthly updates. We do a monthly letter to the metro council district representatives so they can share with their community specific to those areas where we've consistently seen high odor concerns, which is in that west area. It's kind of west of Ninth Street, which is our combined sewer area where we tend to have more issues. So we want to make sure that they're aware of the different meetings we're having, where we're working, things of that nature. I mentioned earlier that we, our website, so we did change our website some. Previously, we had quite a bit of information on it, and it was really a little, a little more difficult to, to scroll down and find it. We, we advanced, and I should have put a picture on here, but what we've done is we've categorized things a little bit easier so you can see them. So now you can see the, where all the action item information is. We also have a dashboard where you can look at inquiry yourself or time period or by street name, what odors have been reported, as well as videos in any of our meetings that we have. We have videos about odor, links to those videos on YouTube. We continued to do mailers, and we, we sent notices out. I think we've done it two years running now to announce that odor season is here or it's coming and to alert those in the community that they might notice more odors and to encourage them to let us know so that we can try to respond. We're also working on a quote "end of season" letter. Let's be clear, just because it's the end of the season doesn't mean we won't have odors. But we know that we see a higher number of odors between June and October. So kind of coined that odor season because we want to make sure we heighten our communication to the community and want to make sure we heighten our response activities with doing more adding of water to catch basins and things of that nature because it tends to be hotter and drier at most times. Our end of season, I think communication, I already know it today, I think. So we probably won't go on out here the next day or two. In the next slide, if you have one, thank you. I've talked a little bit about this. I do want to let you know that in fiscal year '25, we had 1,493 odor compliances or noted odor concerns that reported to us. One of the other things we did in late, in this fiscal year is we started doing more active follow-up with customers. So we attempted to call customers, we're sending follow-up letters. Also, if they've got multiple concerns within a window or feel like there's, you know, something, you know, truly happening there, that's a little more systemic, we're meeting folks onsite to really make sure we're understanding where their concern areas are. I mentioned the odor dashboard, of course, we'll, we're doing that as well to allow you to see exactly where some of those concern areas are as well. And then we've done what we call our, we're calling it, I guess, enhanced response or canvassing is what we like to call it. You know, we don't know when there's an odor issue unless someone lets us know. So we're always in person, community, if you've got a problem with odors that are related to the sewers, please let us know. But we also want to try to be proactive as much as we can. So we have mapped out key areas where we know we tend to have more odor concerns. And we're actively driving those areas to see if we sense that there's some odor issues. We're also going out to some of those more problematic areas and in advance checking to clean out, to catch basins, add water, and things of that nature. Just again, and we are constantly adding, we added a few the other day, you know, streets to that list so we can be, again, a little more proactive when we know there, those are areas that tend to be frequent. And, you know, not changing, you know, from one period to the next. You know, last year we had a list of, I guess, last year, being '24, we had a list of areas. And like I said, just recently, we added more because we're starting, you know, increasing a different area. So we wanted to ensure that we were being more proactive for that particular area of the community. You can change this slide. So I mentioned very quickly the dashboard. So if you actually go to our website, and this one is representative of what, probably was an example in the actual report, and it was probably this one. This is for the fiscal year, so July of 2024 through June 30th of 2025. But if you go. June 30th of 2025. But if you go after our website, you can actually put in the date range that you want to look at to see where there are odor concerns. You see there, it lists the total by month. It also lists, the pie chart shows you, you know, how we receive that odor complaint. Sometimes they come in via phone calls. Sometimes they come in through our Smell My City app, sometimes email, et cetera. That's important to us as well because we, we want to make sure that we are aware of, you know, those areas and how folks are getting that information to us. You can also look at a street name, because it's a street, a specific street name, or a district or a zip code. That's information. You could go out there and just say, I would look at all those that are in, you know, District 1, and it'll show you for whatever time period you have, how many odor complaints that were reported in District 1. This, this was a different than what we had before, before I think we had more of a PDF, just listing. It was really come forward to see, you know, as much information. So this allows you to provide, provide you a little more information about, you know, what those statistics look like from an odor perspective. The other thing I'd like to mention real quickly is, and so this again is fiscal year, but if we are looking at calendar years, I like to look at calendar years because we think of an odor season, odor in January, you know, you're looking January through December in my brain, although I know we like to do July through June. But if you look at the actual calendar year of 2023, we had 2,544 odor complaints. If you look at 2024, we had 1,712. And right now, if we compare where we are in 2025, right now we've got 1,052. And you're like, well, that's, you know, it's not a full year. But if we look at year to date, 2024, we're at about 15.5. So we're running about 30% less than what we did last year. And in '24, we ran about 32% less than we did in 2023. So we're, we're encouraging folks to let us know as much as possible when there's an odor concern so that we can do our part in trying to address that concern. And likewise, we're also working on projects that are identified in our short term action plan that I'm going to go over here and re-plan a little bit. I think that's probably next section. It is. Okay. You can flip through that. Let's go to the next one. Okay. So as with projects that were listed in several, these are multi-year projects. And so these are very large projects. So there's three that were completed during this time period. One was we did an odor control management plan for our dirt guffrey facility. So it's one of our treatment plants. We completed our Western Outfall Sewer Shed Study. So we're now assessing what type of treatment options we have on that waterfall, oh, I'm sorry, Western Outfall. And that's a line that runs from downtown on Broadway down toward Shiny Park, and has historically been a source of odors. And catch basin work continues. We did complete also another set of catch basins, which were the California catch basins during this recording period. You can change this one. So give you a little more just overall update on catch basins. To date, when we started, we've kind of, we've replaced 283 catch basins. So for those of you that have been in the meetings before, we've talked about the catch basins and how they can be a source of odors. We've talked a lot about how when they're untracked, they're a source of odors. And so what I'm saying, we're replacing them. That's what we're doing. We're adding traps to them. So the way we've explained in the past is if you think of your kitchen sink and how it has that elbow there, that water line that stays there, prevents the odors from escaping. Well, in the untracked catch basins, we don't really have that. So we're going in and tracking them to hold those odors in so they don't escape and cause concerns in the community. So that's what we're talking about. We're talking about replacing those. We replaced 20 of them in Park Duval that were identified as needing to be tracked. And again, some of this was pre-dates of recording. California, we've done, we placed 72 of those. That was what was completed during the recording period. We've also done the Nuloo area, 19 in the Nuloo area, and 172 were done in Shiny during this recording period. If I'm not mistaken, I think we've completed Shiny now. Yeah, and we've got some other areas we're actively working on as well. So this is kind of a big aspect here. And so if you look at the report, so the report I sent you, it really does outline the scope of each one of these projects. You do, you know, updates on the projects. And it, and one of the things that I'd like to do at the end of that, that was going to do today, the project is this list. So it gives you kind of a list of all those projects that were in a short term action plan. So this is a list of all the actual projects that were in the short term action plan. So this is what we communicate that we were going to work on in those two years. And if you look at it, it not only does it list the project here, it tells you what our budget amount was for that two year time period, tells you what our expenditures were, which is $132 million that we spent in this fiscal year, this year '25 on these projects, tells you the percent completion, how far along we are on completing those, and what our projected completion date is on those projects. As you see, there's several in green that are voted or completed. There's three of those, those are the ones I mentioned earlier. You see those first couple there. Let's go, we're going to detail the fire sauce facility, which is a large project for our handling of our solids. It is a multi-year project. She's not only completed until September 2028. It is a large, one of the largest projects we've done. So it's under construction actively at 38% completion rate there. Our Sun Basin project is going to have our Morse Foreman facility, so treatment facility. And that project is nearing completion. You saw it right here. It shows a 88.9%. I mean, honestly, the August 34th date, we won't say, but it will be completed before the week to here. We'll have a slight delay on that one. I think that's probably why we've got a yellow there. And then the Southwest Pump Station Gas Monitoring Odor Control. Again, what's here is what was reported in your report, but that's been completed now. So you'll see that in your midyear report. And then if you look at the next two for the hydrogen sulfide remover and the DAC that have out for rehabilitation work at Morse Foreman, those are longer term projects. So we will update those in the midyear so that you'll know how a little better go where we are. We have started some construction on the DAC. So that project's moving forward as well. And then if you look at the next set there for the collection system, we have two studies that are underway there that will be getting started. And those are going to be worked for the next year, next few months. And then we also have a pump station, a Starkey Pump Station. Again, that one, I believe, has started, but we've got it again through June of '26 to complete that project. And again, these were the dates that we initially put in our action plan, our projected completions. If you look at the bottom area there, it says catch basin. So first one, it shows the California catch basin. We talked about that. The I line that shows catch basins and it just, you know, has NA there. What that is, is us doing inspections. So we've got, forget how many we've got. Well, in the combined, now that's important, 22,000 in combined. I think we got close to 60,000 in the entire system, but 22,000 catch basins in the combined system. So we are actively going through all of these areas, again, because the combined system where we tend to have more concerns with odors, and inspecting the catch basins to identify which ones need to be replaced, meaning they need a trap. And then run across to some who say that they need to be cleaned out or sort of taken in, they're about, so that's correct. And if there's ones that need repair, we do that as well. So that I line is just saying that we are consistently doing those inspections throughout all of that combined system catch basin. So that's why it's a continued item. The other catch basins, I'll briefly go through those. Shiny is on track. Well, actually, we talked about that one's done now. And then Taylor Berry is on track as well. East Market Nulu, the Nulu piece of it, the 19 that we had identified that was really part of that work that metro government was doing for the beautification that you've seen downtown. We really partnered with them to move those up to get that work done so we wouldn't have to tear up the street twice. So that work was done and that's completed. But there are some other areas in East Market that we'll be working on, that we've already identified which ones need to be replaced, and those will be scheduled out as well. And you'll see those in some of the future reporting. What I'll say is that's really the end of my presentation. I'm trying to keep it succinct and high level. If, you know, you have specific questions about the report, let me know. One of the things I forget to try and make sure we keep kind of a table there to give you a quick look at what's happening and where we are. I think it's a good way for us to see the progress that we're making. We will be again completing our midyear report that will cover July 1 of 2025 through December 31st of 2025. And that will be completed by the March 31st deadline, March 31st of 2026. The work on those projects, of course, will, will continue. And we're also starting development on our medium term action plan because we'll need to turn that in during the summer. I think it's August sometime for the next two years. And some of those projects you saw, particularly those larger treatment projects, will of course roll over to the medium term as well because they're, they're multi-year projects. And you'll also see some new ones as well. Other than that, I don't have anything else unless there's any questions for me.
So it's obviously good news that the trend on complaints is down. Can you tell if they're down specifically to areas like California where you've completed a significant number of, of remediation of the, of the traps?
I will say that.
Okay.
I'll let you answer.
My name is Kevin Gibson. I'm the executive chief of Strategic Programs at MSD. Yes, we have seen a decrease in the California neighborhood, park neighborhood, and park to the wall. Those are areas that we have, we, the replacement of catch basins, which when Mr. Reed talked about the canvassing, we're, we're still canvassing those as well, even though the catch basins are replaced.
It's important enough too, even though we trap those catch basins, they, they still need to have water in them. So sometimes when they dry out, that can help. So that's another reason why we'll go by and check those to make sure that, you know, they have what they need to function the way we need.
But you definitely sit down and then suggest what's happening and is.
We're seeing trends. Yeah, we're definitely seeing downward trends in key areas and there's, Kevin stated it. And the areas where we did the catch basin work, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And the areas where you did the catch basin work, is, is the improvement also at around 30% or so, or is it perhaps better?
It's a little bit better, but I don't have that number off the top of my head. A little bit better. And as you said, we're still going to charge for you. I would say that I would let it right to see if even inform a couple of people. And we're, and we're going, anybody we'll talk to, anybody's. We're going to, we're going to.
It's good to see you have a community engagement plan to your approach. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for real time customer service, though. My concern is that if someone issues a complaint, and then MSD tries to follow up with that person, that person doesn't know the resources to be able to receive that complaint because the time that they took to issue that complaint, that was their time for the week because they're busy, they work, they don't have the same ability to, to be able to receive that, that customer service follow up.
Well, what I'll say is when, when we receive notification that someone has a concern, we immediately put a, what we call a service request in the system. We immediately then send that out for someone to investigate. So if a customer's called, they provide us with an address, we've got to have, got to know where it is. We're going to go out there and respond. We're not going to wait to make contact with them before we go out. So we'll go out and assess to see what we find. We'll know all of that. The piece that I talked about with trying to meet customers on site, what we found is we do that and customers would still call. So at that point, we're trying to understand, well, we, we went out and we investigated. We didn't see a problem. So just give me a little more information about what it is you're, you're seeing, you know. And some of that, they can email us as well. There's opportunities for them to email us. We are, the website now, you can use it on your phone. So there's certain means for them to get in contact with us if they need to. We've got, you know, social media. We look at that as well. We'll get stuff from our public relations that someone has an odor concern, and we'll go out and investigate that. So those, those are the ways that, that we, we try to do that. The one thing I will say that has been a caution, has been a concern, and I know we've talked about this previously before Director Hamilton, is the Smell My City, although it's very, very, very convenient, we don't always get the best information from it on where the actual issue is. What it does, it does kind of a GPS location. So from, from the phone for wherever the individual is when they put the complaint in. Well, you could have issued at your house, and on your way in, you know, you texted in. So then, but we're going to the wrong address to find the issue. So as we go out to these community meetings, as we do our clarity meetings, you know, really trying to encourage folks to call us directly or email us and who's our site. But if they want to use the Smell My City, we're asking them, you know, give us a phone number, you know, put it, give us your name, give us a little more information so that we can figure out exactly where the concern is and try to contact them to the best of our ability. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those not familiar with Smell My City, it's a third party app. It's actually here in Louisville. We use it as well. For us, the geolocation hasn't really turned out to be too confounding, but for MSD, the issue may be a catch basin. It may be a downspout directly connected to the sewer system at someone's bedroom window. So having that a little bit more exact information, anytime folks can leave us or MSD contact information from whatever source they use, phone call, email, if they leave contact information for us, that gives us a chance to follow up once our investigations are completed. That concludes it today.
Thank you.
A long one. Thank you all very much.
Real quick, and we'll get out of here. In these meetings typically don't go this long. I know you're nervous. I would be, but, but that's okay. So we, all the air quality data report and enforcement status report and access mission report, and all the reports were submitted, as in normal electronically. I don't know if anybody has any questions. You'll note that during September, we had those really strange, very hot days, and it kind of took a whammy to the ozone trend and, and concentration. So, and there are, you're doing.
We believe some of those days may also have been impacted by wildfire smoke. And so we're looking at those for another potential exceptional event demonstration.
So stay tuned. With that being said, we'll adjourn the meeting. The next board meeting is Wednesday, December 17th at 20:25 at 10. And happy Thanksgiving and safe holidays. Thank you.